No, here's we're in February. Ah, there he is. Welcome to the meeting of the Monterey City Planning Commission Tuesday, February thirteenth. Uh, can we have a roll call?
Sure. Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth?
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Present.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Here.
Um, Commissioner Freeman, Commissioner Latassa. He's not arrived yet. We will mark the time if he does come. And Commissioner Silva. Okay, I can go ahead and announce the staff members present. We have our planning manager Levi Hill. We have principal planner Fernando Rovary. We have senior associate planner Chris Schmidt and myself, recording secretary Erica Brera. And Commissioner Latassa has arrived at four oh one P M.
Right on time. Uh, so first, first call here is for consent agenda and on that is approval minutes. Um, does anyone have any changes to make or are for? People to to pull on the January twenty third's minutes? No, no.
I can go ahead and remind the public how to participate via Zoom as well.
Thank you.
Um, information on providing or on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. And thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you. Um, general public comments, the public may speak on any item that is not on the agenda and that is in the Monterey.
We still have to take an action on the consent agenda before moving forward.
Excuse me. Um, so can we have a, we haven't had any comments on the consent agenda, but uh.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. There's one.
Second.
Second, Bob Bluth.
Okay, uh, Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman? I'll mark you as abstained. Commissioner Latassa?
I was also abstained.
Okay. And Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Right? The consent agenda is approved with a vote of five.
Five, yeah, five. Okay, general public comments. Public may speak at any item that is not on the agenda and that is in the city of Monterey's subject matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone uh? With a hand raised?
Uh, there are currently no attendees online.
No one, no one in the audience? No. Okay, moving right along. Um, public hearings. Consider an employee parking program and residential parking program for four, five, seven, Wave Street. C two zoning district, commercial, general plane, land use designation. Sequel, uh, uh. I think we've, we've looked at this one many times and here we are again. We have a, a, a staff report on this, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My name is Fernando Rovary, principal planner for the city of Monterey. Thank you. I have a brief presentation for you. So yes, the project location is four fifty seven Wave Street and uh, today before you is a proposal for an employee and residential parking plan. Um, this project uh, has been reviewed by the planning commission many times. Like you said, um, it started back in two thousand eight. With a master use permit and a parking adjustment that the planning commission approved. And this use permit allowed the conversion of a twenty one thousand four hundred and nine square foot. H one landmark historic resource known as the antique mall building. From retail sales to office use and the six space parking adjustment. And it also approved a two, three story residential condominium buildings. And nine covered off street parking spaces at four fifty seven Wave Street. And the parking requirement for that um, conversion of. Retail sales to office use was a seven parking space requirement. And for the residential condominium buildings, it was an eight, eight parking space requirement. So um. Two parking spaces per condominium unit. And there's four condominium units. So the parking requirement was a total of fifteen spaces. However, the planning commission approved that. Six space parking adjustment for four seventy one Wave Street. And so that parking adjustment became a condition of the approval. Um, the applicant is required to pay a parking adjustment and leave fee of eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars per parking space. Times six spaces is fifty two thousand two hundred and sixty. Um, uh, some other parking conditions was. That the applicant obtain a minimum of one cannery row garage parking permits for each residential unit. So that means four permits minimum. A minimum of five cannery row garage parking permits for the commercial tenants of the antique mall building. And that the applicant come back for approval by the planning commission of an employee and residential parking program. Um, in two thousand twenty sixteen, the planning commission approved with conditions. A permit which amended the original use permit to allow four of the nine. Proposed covered parking spaces. To be used by antique mall owners consistent with the recorded covenants, conditions and restrictions.
Share screen. Make sure, right, make a drive, yeah. Swing, base rate, or should I receive?
Screen. Start over.
You're okay. The audio came through, but just folks can see it on the screen. So now. Now it should work.
Okay, so start over.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, um, okay. Uh, so. The master use permit and parking adjustment from two thousand eight. Um, approved the conversion of um, the antique mall building from retail sales to office use at four seventy one Wave Street. And a six space parking adjustment. And it approved two, three story residential condominium buildings. And nine covered off street parking spaces at four fifty seven Wave Street. And so the total parking requirement was fifteen parking spaces minus the six space parking adjustment. Um. And that parking adjustment um. Comes with an in lieu fee of eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars per parking space. And um. Some other conditions of the use permit was a minimum of one cannery row garage parking permit for each residential unit. So four permits minimum, one for each of the condo units. A minimum of five cannery row garage parking permits for the commercial tenants at the antique mall building. And then employee parking and residential parking program for review and approval by the planning commission. Um, and then in two thousand sixteen, the planning commission approved. A permit that amended the original use permit to allow four of the nine. Covered parking spaces to be used by the antique mall owners consistent with the recorded covenants, conditions and restrictions. Um, in order to approve the residential and employee parking plans, uh, the planning commission needs to make the following findings. Which are included in our zoning ordinance. Um, that the residential parking plan shall identify means to provide parking for all of the residential units. And locations for the parking may include on an onsite lot, another lot under same ownership. Offsite private lots with parking agreements or permit spaces in a public lot with a fee and agreement. And so for uh, in your exhibit A, um, the letter from the applicant shows that the. Parking spaces five, seven, eight and nine, as you can see on this screen. Are would be permanently assigned parking spaces for the residential condo owners. And then um. As part of the condition of the original use permit, um, the applicant will also purchase four. Cannery row garage parking permits, also for use by the residential condo occupant. And the cannery row parking garage is a five minute walk from the four fifty seven wave condos. The findings for the employee parking plan are similar, um, that the employee parking shall describe how a business or occupant. Will handle employee parking. The parking locations may include an onsite lot, another lot under same ownership, offsite private lots with parking agreement. And permit spaces in a public lot with fee and agreement. And the, the same exhibit, but. For the uh, employee parking plan, the applicant. And identified parking spaces one, two, three and four. As shared parking spaces. And the antique mall owners and occupants will have. Of access to those spaces during business hours, which are identified as ten A M. To five P M. Seven days a week. And outside of those business hours, those spaces will be open to the residential condo occup- uh, occupants or owners. Um, and in addition, uh, the applicant is proposing to obtain five cannery row garage parking permits for. Um, the antique mall owners and occupants. Um, so with all of that, um, the applicant would be meeting all of the parking conditions, um. That was part of their use permit. And the recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution approving the. Parking programs at five, four fifty seven Wave Street. Uh, that's it for me. I'm available for questions and the applicant is here.
Uh, questions for staff? Peter?
Thank you, Fernando. Welcome back.
Thank you.
One of the letters that uh, the commissioners received. Uh. Went into sort of a um, an interesting. Dialogue regarding the semantics of employee parking versus parking for the benefit of the owners. This is related to the commercial. Um, and they had an exhibit from the H O A C C N Rs. That never described the parking for employees. It was just for the benefit of the owners. And I was wondering if you can make a comment on that, clarify.
Okay, um. Yeah, the parking, um. So our code says employee parking plan, but it. It can be accommodated to the commercial tenants or occupants or owners, um, whatever. Is um, is going to serve the antique mall building the best. So if. If the language needs to be changed to owners in the exhibit, uh, that we don't see an issue with that.
You know, gee.
I have a question.
Mike?
Is the fifty two thousand dollars one time fee?
Yes.
And if this plan is approved by the planning mission, which includes parking inside the condominium parking lot. For both the residents and the owners of the uh, commercial antique mall. And then there is an opportunity for additional parking at the cannery row garage. Why does the penalty have to be paid at all?
Um, that parking adjustment for six parking spaces. Um, was approved with the condition that a parking adjustment fee be paid. Um. That's, that, that was the approval. I'm not sure.
So the parking adjustment fee accounts for the amount of parking that's not being provided. Outside of the combination of the onsite parking that's provided and the parking permits. So.
Permits to park in cannery row.
That's correct. So if there's still that excess parking that's required, but not being provided in those two means, then that's where the adjustment is required.
I think it's, the idea is to, is to keep people off the street.
That's correct.
Yeah. Mike?
I'll hold my dec comment.
Um, I have a, I have a question. Um, this is, this is uh, like fifteen parking slots that were, that were arguing over here. Um, how many have already been sold? On the, in the cannery row parking lot. Is that, is that reaching? Fall down, fall down, go dead?
Um, so this uh, conversation, we've had it with uh, the parking superintendent. And. It, it, it's project by project, but for this project, the superintendent. Communicated that there would be enough parking permits uh, on a monthly basis to be sold. Um, for these addresses.
Well, for, for, for these addresses, what, what about what happens a year from now, five years from now? Are we gonna run out of space?
We would definitely want to evaluate the capacity of the garage before we made any other approvals that um. Satisfied parking requirements in the cannery row garage.
Um, so the, the parking person uh, gets to choose.
Yes, so the parking superintendent has the best understanding of what the capacity is for all the public parking garages, what those vacancy rates are. Um, so, um, yes, she would have the um, the ability to weigh in on any future developments that proposed uh, satisfying their parking requirement through the public garages.
Thank you.
Of course.
No more, no?
Um, thanks, Fernando. So the um. The parking plan provided by the applicant uh, shows a P six space that looks like an accessible space. But it doesn't seem to come into any of these calculations. Is it just excluded because it's um, an accessible space?
It's excluded from um. Being assigned to anyone. Um, so it, the applicant was able to meet the. Four spaces uh, required onsite for each condo unit. So each, at least each condo has one permanently assigned space. Um, if. Um. A co- a condo occupant is, needs that um, accessible parking space, I imagine that they can. Use it if there's more than one that requires an accessible parking space that, that. That's just gonna have to get resolved by all of the owners. Um. But yeah, that accessible space was not. Does not meet any of the um. Was not counted as meeting any of the conditions. So it's, it's kind of extra.
It's sort of a building permit requirement.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question. On these two condominiums, how many bedrooms?
So there's three that have two bedrooms and one that has three bedrooms.
So the odds are that they're gonna have more than one car, more than one adult.
Yes, and that's why um, the cannery row parking garage permits are, are so important.
Okay, thanks.
Um. Can we hear from uh, the public and hear from the uh, applicant? The applicant here?
Yeah, I believe the applicant's here.
Hello, everybody. How are you today?
Welcome.
Thank you. So um, I am with the ownership group, Monterey Wave Sheet Partners, and regarding the whole employee ownership, so. Do the, for the original conditions of approval did require that we provide an employee parking program, but. In our C C N Rs and our shared parking agreement, it is just for the owners and occupants that will occupy the four you flex spaces. At the condos and then the five off street parking could then be used for employees if necessary. So just to kind of make that clear all the way across the board, we did originally have the language. But um, reflect that in the parking program, but because it didn't match the original conditions of approval, we had to amend it back to match. What was already previously approved like back in, is it two thousand and six or eight? So. Just to kind of make that perfectly clear for owners and occupants of the antique mall to use those flex spaces versus employees or the public. And that, if you have any questions, I'm here. If not, I'm. Nothing else to say.
Um, I saw someplace where, where the uh, the usage for the building was going from retail to office. And it, I, I think I saw only a, only a little blip of that, but can, can you explain how that's gonna work?
Um, as of right now, there's two separate parcels. You have the antique mall, which is. Commercial space, individually owned A P N's for all the owners, and then the four condos primarily are just for residential condos. There's no commercial, no, I think just we have the parking, we have the one ADA unit, unit three, which has the. ADA compliant parking spot as well, but there's no commercial. Space on that four fifty seven way street condos. There is an easement between the two buildings that is granted to the antique mall for. Um, trash and fire egress.
Yeah, I, I remember arguing about that years ago.
Yeah, but on that is there's no resident, there's no commercial space on the condos.
Okay, thank you. No more questions? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, is there anyone in the uh? In the uh, internet looking for time? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Bob Paulus, resident of Monterey, um, owner of land at five zero one Wave Street and also the cannery row project development project. Won't help today maybe, but uh, in April fourth, we have a hearing with the coast of commission. About getting our permit back, which they improperly took away from us. But if that goes forward in. Three and a half years, you might consider you'll have another three hundred and eighty eight public parking spaces in our four story parking garage. But beyond that, in looking at this uh, project itself, I think the type of buyer that would buy that, that we are looking at this type of buyer with our condos. They tend to be more sadly for many of us, a vacation type buyer that come here once, two, three times a year, maybe as a vacation. Um, they tend to see, as I see it, they're using a one car to do that, weaving one car here and then one car at the other place. More and more, we're seeing in California, people going more to Uber, especially the younger type buyer that goes for places like this. They're not seeing the need as, as strong in our opinion of two car per unit. Um, people are liking not even to own a car, liking to be able to. Go out and get an Uber when they want and go out and rent one as they need it, not have responsibility. Um, this seems really well sufficient of a plan for controlling that. Um, I'm even surprised to have to do four parking spaces in the garage itself. Um, but it's a good overflow and protector of making sure there's space available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone with a hand up? Nope.
Um, there are no attendees with their hands raised.
Okay, so um, let's go to comments from the, from the group. Terry looks like a comment kind of person.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm okay with this application. I don't, um, I, I have to admit the, um, I found the submitted letters. Uh, I think there were four letters, uh, a little bit confusing about easements and. I think uh, like Peter said, it's, it's, it seems to be about semantics. And none of them showed up here to make comments, so um. I, I, I have reviewed the um. The reports and, and the ordinances and, you know, the draft ordinances, they all seem fine. So I'm in support of the, of the item. Thank you very much.
It seems to me that the uh, that this is putting the official stamp on what already has been agreed to. In the submissions by the people who wrote letters. Um, and it seems like the goal here is getting an occupancy permit issuance. And that the people can't occupy until this parking program is approved. And the parking program seems to restate what's already been done.
Mike? Yes, sir.
Going back. Decade and a half, we had specific plans. The first time I heard shared parking. The idea is simply that. You use it for residential at sometimes and then you, you open it up and let anybody that's parked there that needs it. And always been fraught with all kinds of issues. If you're sick and you have to go to pharmacy, you come back and your parking space is full. You're out of luck. And that can go on all day. I recall three traffic engineers ago. When he left, he said parking will become Monterey's biggest issue. As far as planning this, how we're gonna do it goes. And he was right. Every issue now that comes up to us. Typically got some kind of a planning parking issue. Um, we created another bureaucracy too. Now, as far as parking plans go, the traffic supervisor has to do a tacit blessing. I don't think that's a really good planning process. I know that everybody's trying to do the best they can with what we have. I understand that. But we're, we're going down a rabbit's hole. Parking, I mean, if you've got three houses, they should have three parking places, period. Because if I'm a resident there. I don't just have part time parking needs, I have all time parking needs. But we're, we're ignoring that. And now this. As I recall, the, the, the parking fees were less fifteen years ago. When I asked the question, what is the cost? But now obviously they're going up, so now it's. Half of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, for parking permits. And then five minute walk away, I'm sorry. Most people will not for five minutes. They will park their car wherever they can, sometimes just get a ticket. Because they won't walk five minutes, so. Sure, we're gonna have offenders. I, I appreciate that. Nothing we can do about that, but. We need to do some different planning. We. This idea of trying to share or stack cars in some places now. We gotta think beyond that. I mean, we've got to come up with some. Common sense solutions that have always. Just trying to plan, a plan B, a plan C, a plan D. I'm, I'm sorry, that this, this is just becoming too confusing for the public. And the city. Thank you.
Um, one measure of that would be uh, what kind of uh, of history of, of tickets? Parking tickets do we have in that, in that particular neighborhood that's uh? That, 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 that could point to the fact that uh, people won't walk five minutes.
I wouldn't have that data offhand.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd hope there would be a database for that. Not, okay.
It it's funny, the I don't know if you could call it a consensus, but the it it seems like in in urban planning world, the idea is there will be less parking associated with units due to the basically the demography of of, you know, these younger users being in these units and who tend to have less cars. And as far as I can tell, that is happening. Not very quickly, but it is.
I'm just gonna say the state of California is still seeing the same increase in automobiles.
Yeah, I know. It's it's hard to really see, but but they say it's happening.
Yeah, they say it's happening, but obviously evidence is otherwise.
Well, let's uh, let's bank this for the for the next time we have a condo with too many people and too few parking spots.
Well, you know, it's it's not as bad as, you know, so some of the affordable requirements where you have a density bonus project, and the parking ratios are one parking space per per unit, you know, it's and that's the direction that we're heading, you know, or half, even half a space per unit. And ADUs, if they're within a half a mile of a transit stop, don't have to provide any parking. So that's the world that we're heading, Mike, and you know, for better or for worse, I think it's gonna be for worse. There are a lot of communities that are taking advantage of the new, all the new building legislation, and and there are certain communities in California that are fully in compliance and are getting a lot of projects built. But where's the parking, you know? Santa Cruz, for instance, is going to be majorly impacted with a lot of affordable projects, density bonus projects. And the parking right now and the traffic right now in Santa Cruz is horrible, and it's just gonna be 10 times worse in five years. So anyway, that aside, let's get this rolling. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Oh, second. Second with Dan. Can we have a roll call?
Sure. Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Blues?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
No, with the objection.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latase?
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries with a vote of six. The decision is appealable within 10 days to our city council. We have applications online or in our planning office.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Item number four. Recommend city council approve amendments to chapter 38 of the Monterey City Code establishing exemption criteria and minimum performance standards relating to the use of emergency generators during emergency power outages. This is very timely, very timely. Can we have a a staff report, please?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Chair Dawson. My name, my name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a senior associate planner for the city of Monterey. I have been working with the city staff on this ordinance. So again, we're looking at an ordinance to establish exemption criteria and minimum performance standards during emergency power outages. I'm sharing. I'm pretty sure I'm sharing. Okay, so to to begin with the recommendation, the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution recommending city council adopt an ordinance with these amendments. Just some background. So in the last two storm seasons, we've had a lot more power outages than I can than I can recall at least. And a lot of these were extended for, you know, multiple days. Because of this, a lot of folks have inquired about the installation of generators, which have been bound to be important for public safety. They're often used for refrigeration or things like medicine or necessary for medical devices or other electrical systems, necessary for for commerce, for businesses. And then the staff has also found, you know, due to climate change, there's an expectation that storm intensity and frequency would increase as well as wildfire risk, which would further put our utility providers' ability to to provide electricity at risk. So staff has really taken a look at you know, the impacts of the storms in the last few years and and found that these this equipment can be necessary in many cases. So we have received multiple inquiries. Lots of people have submitted applications for permits for generators. And in many cases, the staff has found that these generators do not comply with the current noise ordinance standards found in the zoning ordinance and the nuisance ordinance in the city code. And if you can't meet those standards, the staff can't approve the permits for these, this equipment. So we've had a lot of often residents unable to build their generators, you know, going back in the last year plus. And so just getting a bit into the analysis of why we're looking at some of these a- and some some details on on what the current noise standard maxims are and kind of what generator equipment is kind of emitting in terms of of noise. So as you could see on the left, I have table one. This is straight from the staff report. It's a list of the maximum noise levels in decibels, and we have a range of 60 to 70, you know, 60 in in the residential zones, 70 in the commercials, or excuse me, industrial zone, and then 65 in commercial. And then on the right-hand side, I I did an estimate of various various generators of of varying wattages based on the specification sheets for applications that have received by staff have also been on manufacturers' websites and kind of getting an estimate of of what the noise from these things are. And so typically, manufacturers provide a specification of a noise level at a specific distance, that distance for a reason that I couldn't explain is is normally at 23 feet. So you see that in table two, the second column is that decibel level at 23 feet, and then staff has used a pretty rudimentary calculation to estimate what that would be at five feet, which is a common location where generally residential property owners have been asking permission to locate static generators at their homes. And as you can see, at at about five feet, we're looking at a decibel range of I see here 74.26 and all the way up to 93. And this is with generators that range from 7.5 kilowatts to 150 kilowatts. I've highlighted on on the bottom half here, 27 and a half to 26 kilowatt generators. Those are the kinds that are typically used for like a a single-family home. A lot of folks apply for the 22-kilowatt one. You know, depending on the appliances and and systems in your home, that's usually sufficient. You know, if you've got three refrigerators, you know, 26 may be good. And then the the other generators, you know, 50 and up to 150, I think they even go up to 200, are more multifamily, you know, could be used for multifamily or businesses or or industrial uses, you know, medical office uses. And so the the key point here is there's a range, it's all very similar in range with the exception of some of the really high wattage devices. And then here on on this next slide, table three identifies some kind of comparisons that Caltrans has prepared in terms of what these noise levels really sound like. And looking at kind of the closest, you know, closest to what what generators would produce, we're looking at you know, a normal conversation is about 60 decibel. That's basically, you know, conversation without a microphone, so a little quieter than us today. 17 decibels is a is busy street traffic, 80 decibels is vacuum cleaner, and so on. So, you know, the the typical single-family generator is kind of in between that busy street traffic and vacuum cleaner range, which actually, you know, in hindsight, street traffic could be a lot louder than the vacuum cleaner, but I digress. But that that gives you a range of really how loud these can be. And and I know that in the most recent storm, I I heard a few of them in Monterey, so just something to consider. So further analysis, so what this ordinance would do is it would exempt generator noise generated by generators or equipment necessary to be operated during an emergency. The staff is prepared separately from the zoning ordinance is a definition for emergency that would apply through the nuisance section of the code, but it's generally when there'd be an unforeseen loss of power and the power, the utility provider is essentially not able to provide power. And some of the zoning issues that that the planning commission could consider today and and what is recommended by staff is is that stationary generators in order to be exempt must not be located within the front yard setback, and then generators within 10 feet of property lines must use noise reduction enclosures or products. A lot of manufacturers have a product that can either enclose a a generator, or or you can construct something around it for the same purpose of of reducing noise and and using specific materials meant to do that. So with that, that's staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution recommending city council adoption of the ordinance. I'm available for questions, and I did work with the planning manager on this, so hopefully we get questions.
Yeah. One of the difficulties of having this kind of equipment is it's a fire hazard. We're not requiring a fire extinguisher onsite?
Uh, no, and these these, this equipment requires a building permit. It does require review by our building department for specific fire code issues. I'm not sure if fire code.
When you when you look at atmospheric rivers like we've been having, that's a hell, a lot of water coming down. And typically, that can if it hits the heads, it can crack your heads. So if you're gonna put it in an enclosure, it needs to be protected. Also, that if you put it in an enclosure, if you don't mount it down to a surface, it can wander right up against your enclosure, which can have a heat transfer. This is also dangerous. The last thing is, if a guy has taken a lot of theft reports, if you don't secure that generator, you turn it on, you're advertising, here I am. If I don't have, another guy doesn't have a generator, he knows where to find one. Those are some of the things I think we'd need to address. I mean, it's I did see in the suggestion that we we talked about other things. Chainsaws and other things that are used during emergencies. We're not writing an ordinance on them, at least at this point. Because electric, gonna be hard to charge an electric chainsaw. But these are things that we need to look at in my mind, but I think it's a good starting point on on the issue, because it is becoming more prevalent and I think it's, by the way, did you look at any other cities in similar ordinances?
I did.
I don't need to, I just the fact that I assume that you did, I just wanted to clarify. But I I I support the idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Chris, on your table number two, there's a wide variety of generators that are out there. You can look at the higher-end brands like Whisperwater, and they're
Speaker?
So on table two, there's a wide variety of generators that are available, and it's a matter of cost. I mean, you can look at brands like Whisperwater, which are very quiet, and they're just expensive. So if you're gonna get a low-end brand.
Those are called screamers.
Yeah, you're just gonna get noise. So I think there might be some more work that you could put into just looking at the type of brands that you may want to point the residents towards if there is gonna be a noise issue. Because there certainly are brands out there that could provide that level of effectiveness to make them quiet.
I think that's a that's a great comment, Commissioner Blues. And I think what we're looking for today is is guidance similar to that. I think just to frame that that thought a little bit differently, rather than I think it'd be challenging for us to specify a specific type of brand, but along that same line of logic, if the commission felt there was a a baseline or a bare minimum decibel level from a specification standpoint that should be applied here before further exempting these, then I think that's probably a better way of of making that a minimum performance standard rather than a brand-based.
I agree.
Chris, just to comment on that, not really a question, but really just a dialogue. I think that's going to be very difficult to implement, just because it all depends on the placement of the generator and its relation to the property line or a neighbor. And there could be a wide variety of different circumstances. And so how do you conjure up one standard that would satisfy every possible condition? I don't have an answer to that.
Well, another issue to look at as well is a bunch of them going off at once. You know, we have a cabin, yeah, in Bear Valley, and when you have a dozen of the things going, it's substantially different than having just one. So if you're in an area that has a lot of trees like skyline, where you might have more frequent powerages, you're gonna definitely see the the decibels go up, and you have a whole bunch hitting at the same time.
Cumulonimbus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. So, thanks, Chris. The the 60-decibel limit at the property line is a long-established criteria. Has anybody ever questioned that number? I see, you know, it's helpful to put it in relation to other you know, common noises.
We get regular complaints about in excess of 90 decibels in Kona all the time. Because they have the fairgrounds.
Oh, yeah, right. So my question is, you know, is the has has anybody looked at that 60 number and revisited it? Because I couldn't help but notice the one letter in the you know, in the in this files from a homeowner who has, you know, he bought the generator first and then tried to get the permit for it. He should have researched it first, of course, and then gone and tried to find what products might satisfy that. So unfortunately for that applicant was a little bit backwards. So anyways, just asking, and then what about the the permit process? So is the idea that these emergency generators would be that the homeowners would get a permit for them, or they're just allowed to happen anywhere?
So, yeah, so they they do, the the static ones, the stationary ones that would remain in one location, you know, often built and attached to a slab, require building permit. You know, a lot of folks do use kind of the mobile ones. And these would also be exempt from the ordinance so long as they meet some of those conditions that we mentioned.
But that's what this mainly addresses, really, is the emergency conditions.
Yeah, so this so this ordinance would basically enable the staff to a little bit more freely allow some of these generators in locations where they would not be allowed currently, so long as they include equipment that attenuates. There there are products out there that that are made to basically go right on top of of these generators, and you know, they're all typically fire-rated and have the appropriate exhaust and everything. And so long as they use those, regardless of what decibel is is basically measured at the property line, we, the the point of these conditions was to say, well, there was a reasonable effort to reduce the noise from the generator. And you know, whether it's gonna, and Fisher Silva is correct, I mean, there are so many different variabilities, topography, you know, vegetation, building siding, siding of the generator, fences nearby. I mean, there's so many different issues. We were at the point where it's like, wow, should these applicants be going to acoustic engineers and having you know, these what are fairly you know, these, what are fairly simple projects that will only be used occasionally, uh, have a, have an acoustic report that is, you know, modeled and they spend quite a lot of money on that, be prepared and.
Well, the, the nice thing about the stationary ones on slabs is that you get the benefit of the, uh, building permit and the safety of having the proper shut-off and all that.
And I'll just add, um, so just to clarify, as, as Chris mentioned, um, this ordinance for the purposes of chapter thirty-eight, which is the zoning code, does specifically target stationary generators. Um, as Chris mentioned, the, the experience the staff was having was, uh, there's obviously a need for this type of equipment. Uh, stationary generators do require a building permit. Um, whenever those building permit applications were coming in, we look at the spec sheets. Some do meet the performance standards based on where they're being placed on the property, as Chris showed in the table. Uh, at twenty-three feet away, some of these are meeting that sixty decibel. So if you have a large enough lot, there are places that these can be located where you are meeting the noise thresholds. As you know, in Monterey, not every lot will have that, um, that ability. So, uh, this is, uh, an attempt that, and as Chris mentioned, so staff cannot, you know, sign off on a building permit when we knowingly know it's not gonna meet the standards required in chapter thirty-eight. So this, uh, exemption ordinance is an attempt to, to try to, uh, allow these, again, emergency situations only where there is a necess- uh, necessary need. So it does target that, that is the specific target for the ordinance. So just wanna make sure that everyone's clear with this, uh, the purview of this commission is specifically chapter thirty-eight and, um, obviously in emergency situations with portable generators. Um, people may use those, they may not, but we're not issuing building permits for portable generators. So just wanna clarify that.
And I think there, there's another area that we haven't discussed. One of the things that, one of the areas I, I serve with, serve, and we buy a medical equipment for people who need it. When the power goes off, we buy a lot of generators. Put pappers, um, the CPAP machines, uh, and other respiratory issues where people need electricity, electric power when it goes off the grid. And typically, uh, we always told people, if you don't need it, don't turn your generators on at night because it generates complaints. But there's, are some people who do need that power all the time. I know, I didn't see too much attention to the medical issues. People with, uh, with insulin need to have refrigeration for their product. Those are the kind of things I think that we might wanna consider in, in any redraft of this ordinance. Thank you.
Wes.
Why would the thing have to be redrafted when it's already being, uh, considered an exception to the rule anyway?
Yeah, we could, and, and do it now.
Yeah.
I think that's what they're asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that is, uh, what we're requesting. Um, our recommendation is to forward this on to the council for adoption. However, we are definitely, um, uh, requesting feedback and additions to, uh, the ordinance as drafted before moving it forward. So again, uh, to Commissioner Blues' earlier comments, if there's specifications, if we're not comfortable, the commission's not comfortable uh, with, uh, you know, a more blanketed exemption in the way that it's drafted, if we wanna, um, the commission wants to apply some, you know, minimum standard even for these generators, uh, there, that's within the authority of the planning commission.
Thanks. Um, I'm very much in favor of this, um, because I, I saw my, I saw my neighbors, um, suffering um, all around me and, uh, uh, it was, uh, it, it, we were off for about thirty-six hours, that's all. There's pe- people bit off for forty-eight, sixty hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, that is really unpleasant. Um, the first night I, I, I made dinner at four o'clock so that I would see what I was eating. That's, that's a hard, that's a hard one. Um, so.
I think Shepherd's still, still up. That's in the city of Monterey.
Well.
So I'm still, so I'm very much in favor of this and I'll, I'll move to, uh, I'll move to accept it.
That's a motion?
Hmm.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Have, have we had public comment? Is there?
We, we do have to open it up for a public comment.
Yeah, yeah. We need to open it up to the, to the one man that's standing.
Hello, folks. Um, Bob Paulus, I'm resident in Monterey. Um, this is something I'm really seeing. I'm touched with a lot of community people, a lot of work that I do, and, uh, it's something a lot of people are really noticing. A few things I think you should also add in consideration. Um, there's a real issue with the age of our grid in America, the electric grid. And the generators they use for those, they'll take six months to replace. So don't be surprised if over the next five years you'll find a situation where we'll be without power for six months. And some people are getting more and more aware of that when you have these places advertising the solar generators, et cetera. We should also in consideration worry about the fact that, uh, the financial ability of these people to pay for this. Um, I'd much rather prefer that there be a solid built-in to the ground generator, cause it's gonna be safer than the guy who pulls out his rickety old generator, which are typically much louder in noise. I wanna encourage him to try to do something, he can put in the ground. And if we make these all so silent, which I think is a great thing, but if we make them all so silent, only the rich can afford to put the ones that are built in. Next thing you know, we've got a thousand people running a thousand portable generators that are louder than loud by twice the decimal levels in doing that. So it should be something to worry about, that the enclosures are very important. Uh, the way most of those enclosure are designed, they do fix to the device and it drops the decibels greatly. I mean, I'd almost put it to the point, if you're gonna put one in, you should require in all cases to do that. Um, yeah, it might add another three hundred dollars or so, but, uh, again, that's going against, the people can't quite afford it. But it's gonna maybe make it more endurable if you're ten days, fifteen days without those generators going. And imagine you have a hundred people doing that in your neighborhood, it'll drive you crazy over time. So I do have that consideration of how people who have less money, how they can afford to put these in. They're not pressed into using the portable, which are much more dangerous, more likely to catch on fire and a lot more noise. And that we would do an enclosure and all that, but I think it's great you're considering it and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone with his hands raised?
No, but I'll go ahead and just say once again, um, information on providing public comment remotely on today's meeting is found at isearchmonterey.org. Um, our webinar for today is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Um, there is one attendee online, um, but their hand is not raised. So go ahead and move forward.
Okay, so can we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to, uh, approve, um, to recommend to the city council, approve amendments of chapter thirty-eight of the Monterey City Code establishing exemption criteria and minimum performance standards related to the use of emergency generators during emergency power outages.
I'll second. Second from Dan. Um, can we have a world call, please?
Sure. Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield? Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously.
This is, is there a ten-day waiting period?
So this is actually just a recommendation, so there won't be an appeal.
Well, just one other comment about this. The real estate market is active here, but with few homes for sale, right? Because the inventory is very low. So every time a house goes on the market, they're going to support some new, um, thing that they have that's going to make the house sell, like an, uh, in-home office. A generator might be a new thing that would enable a house to sell a little quicker. Or if a building permit were taken out to bu- build a new home, which wouldn't happen in Monterey because of the water situation, you could require a backup generator as part of the, uh, home construction permit. Just, I think the, I think we're just seeing the leading edge here.
And to follow up on the, um, public comment, um, P G N E does offer programs to support, um, people with medical issues, or if you're in a fire area, um, they'll give you, um, a discount for the purchase of batteries for, for general. And for our area, L skyline, everything down Jefferson Street up to, I think, Matt Monroe is covered in the fire, so you can get those, uh, S chip um, rebates for any of the work that we put in for power outage support systems.
Um, planning office update, please.
Yeah. So if you've been following, uh, uh, city council action, uh, February sixth, you may have noticed that there was an item on the agenda for the city council to consider a one hundred and eighty-day pause for processing of, uh, cannabis, uh, retail store front, or storefront uh, applications. Um, that was discussed at the meeting. Um, however, on a three-two vote, uh, the council denied the staff recommendation and, and directed staff to continue the processing of those applications. So effectively no change in, in what, what was already happening. Um, so just wanted to get the quick update on that. Uh, and we do have, uh, an item tentatively scheduled for the February twenty-seventh PC meeting and then since the publication of this report, so as you see there, um, variance application. And since the publication of this report, also a wireless facility is also being, uh, gonna be on that agenda as well.
So is the twenty-six gonna be, uh, two, two sessions?
Uh, it'll be twenty, the twenty-seven and still likely only just one session.
I'm curious. I don't know if this is proper, but the, was the staff getting buried with applications or what was going on with that?
Uh, no, it wasn't as much about the volume of applications that was received, um, uh, since the, um, adoption of the ordinance and the overlay, there was, uh, you know, and some of our other jurisdictions, uh, uptick in crime, uh, associated with these types of businesses. So it's just an opportunity for, uh, city staff to bring this to the council's attention for further consideration, just, uh, before the processing of these applications and getting, um, deeper into that process, that, that was still the direction of council and they confirmed that it was.
All right, nothing more to be said?
Wait. So I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-seventh, unfortunately. So, um, I usually don't meet, miss this in any meetings, but, um, I'll be back after that.
No more surprises, good. We're adjourned. Thank you.
How are you?